Work session, it is Monday, June 24th, little bit after 5:30, we have all members of council present. This time, our first order of business is an update on the golf course. Let me turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Brian Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. You recall back in 2017, we, the city purchased the Twin Rivers Golf Course, and we also entered into a management services agreement with Down to Earth Golf. As you've seen from recent communications from Mr. Dunleavy, the golf course is, is doing quite well, and I think a lot of it has to do to the talents of the company managing it, and Mr. Dunleavy himself. Tonight, Mr. Dunleavy is here to give us an update on how things are going this year, but also, he also provided for you a draft budget for next year. At your request, he and I have been working on some revisions to the services contract. The contract had an initial term of three years, and then it had a renewable clause in it that required a 90-day notice. And so what we've done is we've updated the, updated the contract to make it just a renewable contract so that year after year, unless one party decides that needs to terminate the relationship, then we would give adequate notice. I'm going to ask Mr. Dunleavy to come on up, and I'm going to turn it over to him, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Nick, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
How are you, sir?
Good, thank you. So, things are really going overwhelmingly positive at the golf course. We hit some, some benchmarks for the calendar year 2018, which saw us reach 40,000 rounds played. Just to remind everybody where it started, it was in the 28,000 range annually when we took it over. So that's a nice increase. Also, we reached $1.4 million in revenue. Again, that's an increase, I think they were in the mid-800,000s the last year that the previous owner had it. So everything continues in the right direction. First half of this calendar year, we're still seeing increases in revenue and rounds played. We're also getting a little more money for those rounds played, so that obviously helps as well. The increases in every revenue category was about 41%, whether it be rounds, golf, merchandise, food and beverage, you know, across the board. That's how much it's gone up on a percentage basis since the city took it over. We've successfully gotten back a lot of discouraged customers. When I first started there, there wasn't a day went by that somebody didn't come to me and say, "I swore I'd never come to this place again." And I don't hear that very often anymore, so it's nice, nice to have turned, turned that around. Our, it looks like we should easily top 1.5 million for this fiscal year in revenue, which is great. And, you know, I like to knock on wood, hopefully it continues the way it's going. A lot of our, a lot of our competitors, I would say, are losing ground while we're gaining ground. So whether it be course conditions, levels of play, the guys I talked to are not having near the success that, that we're having over there. Reviews online, the Golf Now, Golf Advisor review, we have a 92.2% recommend rate. That's not the highest I've seen, but it's pretty close. Several improvements occurred, thanks to the city for, for some of those major ones that really got us off to a good start the first year and made a lot of this possible. We've continued to chip away at some other smaller projects as well. So as a reminder, the parking lot got resurfaced. There's new landscaping in the parking lot. The clubhouse got a new roof. The pump house was refurbished. The irrigation system was completely overhauled. We added irrigation to some of the back tees that hadn't seen irrigation. Sand bunkers were completely redone and continue to look really, really good. We think we have an improved golf course maintenance program and improved equipment, which also helps. Course conditions have exceeded what I had hoped for, actually, when we first got together and started talking about this club. New cups, pins, flags, new golf carts that were, we picked black just to try and stick to a UCF theme for the area. We have more selection in the golf shop. We're fitting golf clubs. Our teaching programs continue to be, I would say, unparalleled for the kind of club we're at. We have several teachers who are just teaching nonstop out there. And, and along with that, the junior program was very good when, when we started. It's even better now. So the amount of juniors learning golf out there, it's phenomenal to see. And of course, it's a smart business plan to seed the future with, with more junior players. We'd like to see more parents playing with their juniors. We're not seeing as much of that, but the kids are remarkable. We've trimmed trees in almost every hole. We're about to do that again. That was, that was last year, and we've added TVs to the grill room. New bar stools, paint in the locker room and throughout the clubhouse, doors, et cetera. New course water coolers, trash cans. We, within the budget, replaced the bridge that goes to the back 18th tee on hole number 18. A lot of simple landscaping to improve the look of the place without adding too much to the maintenance budget. We took over, I don't know if everybody knows this, we took over maintenance of the UCF facility, their practice facility down at the end of the range. They weren't happy previously with the company that was taking care of it. I believe they are now. And we're also seeing their players play the golf course way more than they ever did before. In fact, I just got a list of tee time requests from the men's coach, and it's significant. Some of the drainage, the course was actually engineered very, very well. We've found numerous drains that were not working anymore, so we're hoping that's going to help us through the summer with the rainy season and keep us off the car pass a little more than, than maybe we were on them last year. The local HOA donated two signs for us, one as you enter the parking lot and one along Lockwood. Previously, there really wasn't any, any signage for the place. We still have some, a wish list of things we'd like to accomplish from a capital standpoint, maybe some new furniture on the patio and in the, in the grill room. Maybe an upgrade to the, some of the restroom facilities. Cart paths are probably the biggest issue on the golf course now. And then one of the bigger complaints we hear is that there's no on-course restrooms, which that's not, we knew that, still exists, but.
Are we looking at those freestanding ones that we saw at Lord League of Cities last year?
And already touched on junior golf, but we had a, one of our competitors closed its doors up the road. Deer Run Golf Club has ceased operation. So we're seeing some, some new members from that, a few so far. We've spoken to many people who've said they're coming, you know, after some summer vacations and such. If that happens, it's really going to help us get over the top. And, and we're seeing people from other golf clubs, too, because, you know, several of our competitors are going backwards while we're going forward. So it's a great, it's a great thing to see. And I'd just like to thank, thank the city for, you know, being such a great partner with us. It's been a lot of fun to see this place get better, and we look forward to more of that.
Well, that's awesome, Nick. Thank you. Any questions for Nick?
Sure. Couple of comments, too. One is, I'll just start off. I was playing out there one evening, a couple of weeks ago, and it was hot, and I went up to the water bucket, and it was empty. And sure enough, about five minutes later, the guy came up at 7:00 at night to refill up those buckets. And the reason I say that is I played yesterday at, in MEMS, and we got to the back nine, it was 95 degrees, and there was no water back there. So if you're replacing water a couple of times a day, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It is hotter than blazers out there.
It is brutally hot right now.
Two things I see that, that you might want to think about. One is ball washers on at least a couple of the holes. And one is, folks have been asking me, and these are guys that play a lot, and they're purists, and they want to see yardage markers on either sprinkler heads or, or somewhere out there. It's easy to do with a rangefinder, but they, they obviously don't know that technology.
Yeah, I'm on side with both of those. We, I, I think I have a sponsor for some ball washers.
Okay.
They're expensive. Like, they're
Yeah.
About 350 bucks a piece, those things.
[laughing]
It's ridiculous.
But, no, I think I'm looking at other courses, and you are making way more headway than some of these other places.
I should mention our maintenance staff, too. They've done an amazing job on that golf course, and they're at it every day. It's a really good crew.
Good job.
Any other questions for Nick? No? Nick, awesome as always.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Awesome job. And I like the way the financials are looking. Keep it up.
It's getting there.
Thank you. All righty, moving along, we're on to, Mr. Cobb, you don't, there's no action item on that, right?
Actually, just
You're going to bring the new contract to it.
Mayor, the only thing I had was if you're happy with the contract, we'll move it forward and bring it for council approval.
It looked exactly like we asked for, but Councilman Hankum was the one who requested it, so.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, and Nick, Nick just gave a very good, you know, outline of what's going on out there. And, and look, you know, it's political season. I say this all the time when this comes up. Some people don't think government should be doing this. And I say, well, you know, look at the federal government. How many federal beautiful parks do people, you know, go to? Government does do parks, and this one's doing really well. So regardless of whoever's sitting up there in the next election or the next couple of years, don't be so fast to get rid of this just to prove a political point. You just heard a glowing review. You hear all these other ones are going at, you know, down or out of business. We become the premier place, and I'm so happy. And I'm, I'm not a golfer, but I am a sports fanatic. And I've been out there, and I mean, the place looks incredible. I watch it, but I don't play it. So, but I mean, this is something, this is a, something that we never thought it would get like this, and it's only going to get better. So as I said, whoever is running and going to be up there and whatever, don't, you know, give this some time. It's really doing well.
I just want to mention that at League of Cities, I'm speaking to one of the city councilmen from Orlando, and asked him about Dubstret. And he said they, they only started making money on that course, which is almost 100 years old, if not older, in the last five to 10 years. And they're doing about 50,000 rounds a year. So we're within, within earshot of coming to that amount, and we, we run a lot more efficient operation than that one. So, yeah, we've got a good thing going here.
We, we had a visit from Mr. Cobb, I think informed, or kind of filled everybody, and we had a visit from Akoi, city manager, the mayor, you know, because they're in a similar situation that we were faced with a few years ago, and they just wanted to see how we were doing it, because they were, they had heard so much about how well it was doing.
Get a good management company and let them go do what they know how to do well.
Exactly. Anything else, gentlemen? Anything else, Brian?
Everybody good with the consensus on the contract?
Yes.
Okay, you got it.
Will do. We'll bring it forward.
Mr. Cobb, when you're done with your notes, we'll turn it back over to you for the quick budget update.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight is our third workshop to go over the progress that we've made with the preparation of the budget. Mr. Boop and Ms. Jones and staff have been putting together, refining the different revenues we've received, refining our expenditures, looking especially at the changes from our last work session to now. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Boop and let him take you through it.
Right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cobb. Honorable Mayor, city council members, before you tonight is the June update to the 2019 and 2020 proposed budget. Starting at the very top, looking at ad valorem, we have included the geo bond millage rate savings of $45,000 in that total number. The millage rate savings is .0165. The overall millage rate is 5.2820, and it remains unchanged from last year. Looking at the utility taxes, utility taxes have been reduced due to communication services taxes. As we've discussed in the past, communication services taxes have been declining year over year, and so we reduced this line by 48,500. As of right now, business tax receipts remains unchanged. Licenses, permits and fees were increased slightly by $3,312 to, to reflect a slight increase in franchise fees from the Republic Services contract. And our governmental, as of right now, remains unchanged. However, that will be updated once we start getting the July revenue estimates in from the state. Looking at charges for services, charges for services are increased slightly, and that's due to the handling fees associated with the Republic Services contract. Right now, fines and forfeitures and other revenues remain unchanged from the previous month. However, these will definitely change before the end of July. The use of fund balance is 886, 099, and set to balance both the revenues and expenditures at this point in time. However, I assure you that we will not be using $886,000 in fund balance. That is placed there right now to get us through the process and figure out what we're going to be doing with a few of the line items. Total revenues of 30, go back up a little bit, 30, 30.4 million compared to the current year of 28.5, reflects a $1.9 million revenue increase. Any questions about revenues?
Anything from anyone?
Good.
Okay. Moving down towards expenditures, looking at general government benefits and salaries and police benefits and salaries, these both changed very slightly from last month, and that's due to ongoing personnel updates. Between now and the end of the budget process, whenever we draw the line, these numbers will, will migrate slightly. We do not expect them to change significantly until we place in the approved FTEs for the next budget year. Fire salaries and benefits remain the same. Overtime remained the same. Looking at health insurance, good news on health insurance. We had originally projected a 10% increase in health insurance. That came in at right around 2%. So that's a $262,000 decrease from May, which we presented to you, of course, last month. Great news, great job by Connie and her, her team and working with the Gearing Group. They did a great job this year in getting us to this number. I can tell you that around the state, other groups are experiencing 10 to 15% increases, and we have experienced that in the past. But the medical inflation trend rate seems to be favorable for us right now with our group mix. And so we're going into the next year for the first time with a, with a pretty good fund balance in the medical fund.
Jerry, a quick question for you.
Yes, sir. The, the medical insurance only going 2%, others 15, would really be a good telltale of how well the clinic does, taking those claims off that when they're looking at the claim, right?
Absolutely. That's a significant component of it.
I wanted to point that out because, you know, I know some, some think that we shouldn't have that, that you should just be on medical insurance, but you're seeing the difference. I mean, that's like 13% other cities are getting because they don't have that, and we've taken that all off there.
Excellent point.
Yep.
Through the, you're right. Through the health clinic, we get generic drugs, and we are constantly, Connie and her team are constantly working with care here to refine that contract, refine the pharmaceuticals, get, find better avenues and better prices. So that is all contributed to that performance. You're absolutely right. That's a great point. Thank you. Looking at workers' compensation, we're showing an increase of 49,000. I'm going to skip a line and go down to general insurance. We're showing an increase of 43,000. You know we're out for RFP, for insurance services right now. I can tell you that those lines will decrease significantly. I can't give you an exact amount right now, but those amounts will definitely go down from what we're presenting to you tonight and what we've shown you all along. The vehicle replacement fund decreased $200,000 from the month of May. We went back in and took a look at the immediate needs, and we were able to reduce that by $200,000. Operating expenses actually reduced from the month of May by $51,000, and that's due to two, two items. The retail strategies contract is, expires this year, we're in the last year of that contract, so that's $30,000. Also, Kelly and Nadia went in and took a look, a very close look at legal fees, and we did a four-year average of what our annual legal fees were, and including the increase that we received from Mr. Colbert, we feel that we can safely reduce it by about $21,000 this year. Of course, we never know how that plays out, but we're making that adjustment right now in the month of June. With that, that brings us to the reserve for contingency. The reserve for contingency of $880,000 represents five items. There's $75,000 in there to, as a reserve for benefit payouts, expected benefit payouts for the next year. There's $100,000 in there as a basic reserve for the general fund in case we need to use it in other line items. There is $150,000 in there for expected FTEs for the next year. There is $275,000 in there for a reserve for maintenance expense, and there's an additional $280,000 in there as a reserve for anticipated capital expenditures. So we don't know exactly how those numbers are going to play out at this time, but we're meeting the rest of this week to try and refine those numbers and actually move this 880 into the respective line items where they belong. Okay? But that's in there right now as a placeholder. We just didn't have time to get all that work done. So that brings us to total expenditures of 31.1 million for the proposed budget for next year compared to 28.9 for the current budget year, an increase of 2.1 million. Any questions about expenditures?
Anything, counsel?
Okay. Moving down to transfers, we made some adjustments to the transfers in. We brought in the $35,000 for, for fire impact fees to help assist with fire, fire-related debt. We brought in $50,000 for, from the forfeiture fund to assist with the funding of SRO officers. We also brought in $103,000 from the building fund, which is their contribution to the general fund, the 28% of the building permit fees for billing services. We also brought in $248,000 for the CRA funding, CRA-related debt. So with that, there's a $37,000 increase over the current budget year. Transfers out remains the same. That's, was an increase that was given to the IT Technology Fund related to the replacement of the old Tyco security system that we have here. Transfers out debt remains the same. That is the payoff of the 2012 B, Public Improvement Revenue Note. So with these items in consideration, with your revenues, with your expenses, with transfers in, out, debt brings us to in, out, debt brings us to a deficiency as of right now of $13,171. Now, that deficiency is cured by items that we've selected on the upper right. Change in revenues, we expect $146,000 in from Seminole County to assist with the funding of the new 10th SRO officer and to complete the total year funding for the 9th SRO officer for this year. In the view of the budget, we're constantly refining our revenues, and we're constantly seeing things that need to be tweaked a little bit. So we've noticed that these two line items have never hit their budget year over year, so we've reduced them down to their yearly average. Taking these three items into consideration, we're projecting an increase in revenues next year of $84,000. When you add in the 10th SRO for '71, that gives you your balance difference of $13,171, and that brings us to a zero base or a balanced budget at this point in time. Okay? Any questions? Okay, looking at our operating reserve, as many of you may recall, we completed last year with an operating reserve of $6.8 million. We are projecting, we're projecting, we are proposing a withdrawal of $886,000, and again, I don't expect us to hit that number, but right now that's in there to balance the budget. If we did realize this number, we would have an ending balance of 5.9 million, which compares to GFOA's best practices of 16.67%, which would be 5.2 million. We would exceed that balance by 771,000. Looking at our own internal requirements, our internal requirement's at 15%, totals 4.6 million. Our actual reserve, we would exceed that by 1.2 million. Our actual reserve balances would be 19.14%. But again, I want to stress, I do not expect us to use this number right here. We're going to drive that number down as low as possible when we refine the revenue estimates and when we also make the additional expenditure adjustments. So with that, that is where we are currently at.
Any questions? Keith?
Yeah, just a brief little check. I see you've got the $886,000 as used fund balance in the revenue section.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the same amount? Does that, is that included in the $30 million total?
In the total revenues?
Go to revenue.
Yes.
Yeah. And then we come down to expenses, and it looks like another $800,000 delta between that, but then you're also saying the $886,000 coming out of reserves?
Correct.
Who's that, who do those numbers mean?
Did I say it was coming out of reserve? I may have misspoke. Okay? This is what we're projecting to pull out of fund balance right now.
Okay.
Okay? But again, this number will be driven down once we get estimates in from the state, which will fall into this category right here in our governmental, and once we refine some of these other revenue estimates throughout the budget process. Okay? But when you come down here, what we're saying is that as a reserve, this is not the fund balances in the top. As a reserve, we expect to use another, an additional $880,000 in expenditures over above what we have in each one of these individual line items. Okay? And in that reserve are these items down here in the lower right that I mentioned, reserves for contingency. If you can get over there really quick. These are the individual reserves. Now, these will probably fall out, the $100,000 will probably fall out by itself, and that'll stay in that reserve number. The $75,000 will fall out by itself and stay in that reserve number. So I'm guessing that when we get to the end of the budget process, that reserve will actually be 175,000. The facilities, if that number stays the same, and the capital, those two numbers will be combined and actually put in the capital line. Okay? This reserve for contingency, new positions, will actually go up into either the general government line or the public safety line, either fire or police, wherever those positions actually land. So if we go back over to the left, those, these numbers here, Mr. Britton, total 880,000. So if we come back over here, what we're doing is we're reallocating these expenses up to the individual lines where they will fall when we get done with the process. We just didn't have enough good information to classify them correctly now.
I guess I just don't understand why the total revenues don't match the total expenses when you have that adjustment factor in there. I know this is in the middle.
All the total revenues, oh, because we have these other transfers in down here. These transfers in actually offset.
That delta?
Yes.
Okay.
Brings it down to 13,171, which is cured by these additional line items over here.
Okay. All right. That's what I was looking for.
It can be confusing. I agree.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Kelly has to train me on this all the time.
I'm from the asset sequelib, but.
I am too. I like that.
Everything's got to balance.
I like that practice.
Bob understood it.
Yeah. Bob, why didn't you ask that question?
Because I understood it.
I think the one thing, the $880,000, and Kelly, if you could go back over to the right-hand side, these are the items that we're currently going through the prioritization process. And as we get those, when we determine what we're able to fund and not fund, that's when these funds will move out of the contingency and into the actual expenditures, whether it be into the personnel item for any new employees or into the capital items for, you know, to do the capital projects. And we did break out one special thing for facilities because that is something that we feel needs to be a priority, and so we wanted to break the capital items into those different categories. So that's what's going to happen there on those. And then the reserve for, the reserve on the left-hand side, the 886, what we looked at was, that 3% by policy is the maximum that we can pull out of the, is it the revenues, Jerry? Is 3% of revenues?
Yes, 3% of revenues. We're limited by our financial policies to 3% of total budgeted revenues.
So the idea was that since we're still going through the priority process, we, knowing that we had that number sitting over there, we would pull that 3% out now so that it's a placeholder while we're going through the process, and then as the state revenues come in, as any other revenues come in, we'll start shrinking that down because it'll be offset by the other revenues.
That 3%, we can change that number if we want to. That's a council decision, correct?
Correct. However, we need to be very careful when we take a look at changing these numbers because it doesn't only involve the city of Oviedo. It also involves how Wall Street looks at us.
Right.
Because they assess us by our policies. We currently have a double A rating across all of our issues, so whatever we choose to tweak right here may or may not be looked favorably upon by Wall Street. So we need to be very careful when we consider those things.
Yeah. Now, the reason I ask is, you know, I've been out the last couple of weeks talking to people. How are we doing? I don't tell anybody, but let you all know I've been doing it anyway, just seeing. And, you know, people ask, the guy called me today and he said, hey, he said, I just read online, you guys are 70 million in debt. I said, well, that's probably true. And I said, you guys approved most of it. And I explained it to him, you know, the water plant, the new firehouse, the public works. I said, council very rarely makes a big expenditure on their own, although we could with the $5 million every year. But my question for you is, short of blowing something up and making a massive change to something in here, our budget is very lean. It's very good with 19% actual reserve. I mean, we are in very, very good financial shape, and someone saying we have 70 million in debt is really not indicative of how the city is run because it's all being paid. Some of it is falling off pretty soon, like this building, but most of it, and it is a campaign issue, because I've heard it the last couple of weeks, that the voters voted for most of this stuff, including Oviedo on the park and all this, and the sewer plant and all this debt that we have that you refinanced and everything. It's not, we're not in bad shape in any sense of the word.
Well, when you think about debt, this is outside of the general fund. When you take a look at the enterprise debt, we have pledged revenues to cover that debt.
Right.
So even though you've got 70 million in debt out there, you've probably got $100 million in future revenues to cover that debt.
Right.
So that's the only way that those bond issues would be even available to us. Okay? So yes.
Over 50 million of that debt in the enterprise fund.
Correct.
That's the sewer plant, the water plant, the reclaimed water.
Correct.
Only 20 million of it is in general fund.
Yeah, about 26 million in the general fund, 23, 26, something like that.
Just the point I try to get, because people get confused.
Golf course is in the stormwater fund.
That's in enterprise.
Correct.
Right. Because people get confused when they hear that all this debt, like you're not well-run, you're not managed well, and the truth is, it's one of the best-run cities, and we've never had a problem balancing the budget. Even through the tough times, in the recession, we still managed to do good. So I just don't like when I hear, well, we have all this debt. When you, when you break it down and you look it all through, we're in good shape. And the most important thing I tell people is, most of that debt, you all approved it. The masses approved it.
Right. It's hard to understand, but your debt is actually producing revenue for you.
Exactly.
So, I mean, that's just how that works.
Right.
Well, plus, you know, in my mind, if we want to build a $3 billion, $3 billion building that's going to last 30 years, why would we want the people who live here now pay the whole $3 million when the people that come in 10 years from now don't have to pay anything on that? Why not spread it out to the users of the building over the time it's going to be here?
That's another theory as well, and a good one. That's, that's one of the basic premises behind doing that.
Those are just the facts that get in the way of campaign slogans. That's all.
And in the 2018, the projected beginning balance that you're showing there is a conservative figure as well.
Absolutely. You're, that is spot on.
So that's conservative, the, and as Mr. Cobb said, the 886, as the revenues start coming in, that'll, it'll kind of whittle away at that.
That is correct.
But not only will that whittle away at it, but the expenses that we're, we're fine-tuning for some of the insurances and so on are going to whittle away at it as well.
Yes.
So I would be, you know, willing to bet that at the end of the day, we're probably going to be over 20% by the end of next year in the reserves.
I want to be at 25%. I don't know if we'll be there. I don't want to be 25%.
We're working on it, though. I mean, but we're definitely going to be higher than that. You know, some of your numbers are very conservative in here, so.
Mr. Cobb knows that I want this number to be $7 million at the very least at all times.
There you go.
Because I, excuse me, we need to have this number at 7 million to be able to handle any calamity that could come against this city weather-wise.
Right. But Mr. Boop and Mr. Cobb, chime in on this. Short of, and I'm just drilling down, and the mayor sort of just touched on it, you know, with these campaign things that are out there, short of making some drastic cut to our parks, our staff, or something, we are pretty lean and mean, Mr. Cobb, not, not, we are not wasting money on stuff. Everything we look at, we scrutinize it. I mean, we are not a spend-thrift city. We, it's well-run, and short of blowing this up and taking things away from a full-service city that people have come to enjoy, when you hear that the budget's being mismanaged and we can do X, Y, Zs, it's not the case. I mean, like, I always used to ask Mr. Gestrich, are we done? We're done.
Right. You know? Well, that's, that's one thing that I will address, and Mr. Britton has said it many times, do more with less. And I was talking to, and answer your questions you asked, by the way, we are lean.
Thank you.
We're very lean. We have people that wear multiple hats, and actually, we have many people that wear multiple hats, hats. Ms. Collins will tell you that when she talks to HR directors around our area, they'll find out that we have one of the smallest workforces. And when you think about the services we provide, we are doing, as Mr. Britton said, we're doing more with less, almost annually. And that's one of the things that we, I started looking at. I haven't dove into it deeply yet, but when you look at some of the workforces around us and you look at the services that are provided by those, by those entities, and you look at us, and the major cuts, like you said, Mr. Gestrich, are we done? You look at the cuts that were made, we dove, we cut at least a third of our workforce, and we still haven't recovered it. But yet, we've increased the amount of services. We've opened new parks. We've brought on Oviedo on the park, and, you know, so, I mean, there's a lot of things that we, you might say, haven't recovered.
Right.
From when we had to make those cuts.
Right.
But yet, we're still providing that same level of service that we were providing. Actually, I think we, sometimes I feel like we're doing better. But yes, we are lean. Yes, if we were, you know, as one of the things last year with the amendment, Mr. Boop and I were not sleeping at night because we knew if it passed, we were going through another workforce reduction. We knew that. There was no other way around it. Because our operating, if you think about our operating, it really hasn't changed a whole lot over the years. The big question I'll always love to ask Mr. Boop is, what was the beginning, what was the reserve when you started?
So 2.6 million?
Right. And so we're sitting at 6.8, which, that's one of the things that I love about it, is that we started a plan. We started a financial plan, and we had a goal. Obviously, we wanted to reach it to the 2022, 23, when the most of the debt started falling off, the big, the big part, chunk of it started falling off. So we wanted to make sure that we were financially secure when we got to that point. And so that's what we've been doing. You can see the work, obviously, Ms. Jones, Mr. Boop, and also all the directors, you know, in our departments. They've all bought into this financial plan and how we're, we've been moving along slowly. We didn't run back out and hire everybody at once. We've been building staffs as the economy tells us we need to build those staffs. We've been building staffs as the services have said we need to build those staffs. You can see there, a 10th SRO, us in Sanford, we're in a race, who's going to get the most. That's something that we realized at Seminole County, they put all the schools in Sanford and Oviedo. But, but that's one of the things, is that that's a place where we can't just, our police department, we can't just say, okay, we're going to throw a police officer at it, because we are, we are lean in our coverage, and so, you know, we're efficient in our coverage. And so when we put an SRO, when we take a SRO off the street, then we've got to bring a new one in. Fortunately, the county, with the county funding it, it allows us to do that. We can replace that position. And so, and it also allows us to take a seasoned officer who understands what he's doing and can put him in that sensitive area of a school, and that officer can handle it. And that's one of the things that, when you look at our school resource officers, they're veterans, they know what they're doing, and those kids are safe. You know, so, I mean, that's the one thing that, that we're very proud of here, at least with our program here in Oviedo and in our schools. But we've been able to do that because of the relationship with the school district and what they've been willing to cover. We've been able to not subdue in the, in the police department and still provide that service.
You know, one thing you brought up, Dominic, when we came here and we used to sit around the table with Mr. Gestrich and Mr. Ben Kosky, I used to say to them, this is eight, nine years ago, I would say, you know, we only have like 2.5 million. I said, why don't we, like everybody else does, you get paid, throw a little money in the bank, and look where you came all these years, you're almost there. You know, so that was something that nobody knew about, but we say we should just save. We had exactly what we were supposed to have, but let's just keep saving for that rainy day, and it's almost 7 million. So that's a good thing. Good.
You know, when you talk about the workforce, when Mr. Seber left, I remember his words as he walked out the door to the staff was, make yourself valuable to the organization so that you're not expendable. And I look around our, our staff and our city employees, and they are all valuable and do, provide a valuable service to the city. I want, we need to do to run this place, and I see very, very little waste. Even our police force, we have such a low crime rate. I was playing golf with a fellow that lives in Titusville, similar-sized city, and their crime rate is like 20% higher than the state average. We're doing something right. We have a lot of things going. Our fire department is, I don't know what our ISO rating is, but it's higher than anyone in the county.
Two.
Two. So we do a lot of, a lot of good stuff with a lot less money than a lot of folks, so keep it up.
Yeah, to illustrate something that you were talking about and Mr. Cobb was talking about, I asked Kelly to look for a graph, and she can't pull it up right now, but we'll get a graph out to you tomorrow that shows the per capita FTEs. We sent this out last year, you may or may not remember, but we're operating at two full FTEs below our per capita requirements than we were back in 2006, which I think is huge and illustrates everybody's point.
Well, I, I mean, I would argue that we have a higher level of service today than we used to in the past, even when we had more employees.
used to in the past, even when we had more employees. We have more than doubled the amenities in the city from when I was first elected. And when you look at all the expansions that we've made, all the services that we offer, I mean, it's quite impressive. I mean, anybody who can go around and just be negative about this city, or how it's run, or what's being done, in my mind, is just a negative person. Because this is the, one of the best cities to live in, you know, sure, we got traffic on Mitchell-Hymick Road, all right, we all get it, but that's being, that's being addressed. Another issue is, don't forget, is that we outsourced some departments to help lower our amount of FTEs on our payroll and get better service with dollars. So, I mean, that helped tremendously as well. But, I mean, as we say every year, as we get into this process, as we say throughout the entire year, I mean, kudos to every single staff person, from senior staff to part-time staff, because they all, you all truly love what you do, you all truly love Oviedo, and you all work very hard to give our citizens the top service that we can provide them. And I want to thank you for that. Sure, the entire council thanks you for that.
Absolutely.
Good. Great job.
Anything else, Mr. Boop?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cobb, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
That's it. Anybody else for the good of the order? Well, seeing that we didn't have FDOT tonight, we got to start early, we get to end early, so we are adjourned at about 6:18. Thank you, everyone.